Good evening. Welcome to the Tuesday, February nineteenth, two thousand and thirteen, Waschugle City Council Meeting. I ask that you please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Rose, could you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Boger.
Here.
Councilmember Klinsky.
Here.
Councilmember Greenlee.
Here.
Councilmember Lindsey. Councilmember McDaniel.
Here.
Councilmember Shoemaker.
Here.
Councilmember Freeman.
Here.
Councilmember Lindsey did let us know that she would be absent this evening.
I move that we excuse Councilmember Lindsey.
Second.
I've got a motion and a second to excuse Councilmember Lindsey this evening. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Are there any amendments to the agenda this evening? Hearing none, going to public comment. Would our member of the public like to... This is your chance? Well, yeah. We'll come back around. Moving to the consent agenda this evening, three items: our council minutes of February fourth, two thousand and thirteen, our workshop minutes of February eleventh, two thousand and thirteen, and the regular accounts payable claims totaling three hundred and fourteen thousand, four hundred and thirty-six dollars and seventy-six cents. Counsel?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the council minutes, the workshop minutes, and the regular AP claims. I will note, however, I was not here for the workshops, so I will abstain on that.
I have one question on the AP claims.
Mm-hmm.
I noticed a rather large amount, like, Clark County auditor. Is that for election? Do we spend that much on the election?
I'm not...
Which item are you referring to?
About fifty-nine thousand dollars or fifty-six, three ninety-three.
Yeah. I have to look in the payables, find out if you know exactly what that's for. What else do we pay the auditor for, besides elections?
Cressa.
The auditor? We get that.
Yeah.
I'm not sure. We may remit everything to them. Okay.
We also pay them for the service on the walkie-talkies.
If it's anything that we pay the county for that goes... I just... I wasn't aware that everything that we pay the county for goes to the auditor. If that's the case, then I don't... Like, there's something I need to ask about. There's one to the auditor, like, four thousand.
One to the auditor for twenty... Or to the treasurer for twenty-two thousand, that one. We can find out what those are, if you would like.
Some might be in jails.
Email them to you. We have lots and lots of expenses that we would remit to the county for any number of different things.
Which part of the...
Right.
Off the top of my head, I think the election cost was order of thirty thousand dollars.
We'll find out what it is and report that back to counsel. Dave?
May I add three to that? And my apologies for not getting in here today and asking that question.
Why don't we go ahead and, if you don't mind, let's go ahead and break these apart. Council minutes of February fourth and workshop minutes February eleventh, and take those under approval, and then questions, we'll take the AP claims aside.
I have no objection to approving them and finding out later. I mean, approving the expenses and finding out later. I'm not suspecting anything is amiss here. I'm just trying to find out what's going on.
No, I'm just trying to keep it in a regular flow. Typically, your consent agenda are things that aren't even commented on, other than passing. Any of those items that we have questions on, typically, we would pull off of there and treat them separately, so.
I'm with Councilmember Shoemaker. I have no problem approving it. I just would like... As I just learned something tonight, that a lot more goes... It gets paid to the county auditor than I thought. And it's for things that the auditor doesn't actually do, someone else in the county does, apparently. But I would just like to know at some point. But I'm going to approve the consent items.
Dave, go ahead.
I'll get with Dave afterwards and ask my three questions.
Oh, you can throw them out.
Okay. We're paying Department of Ecology sixty-two, forty-seven, eighty, and I didn't quite understand what that was about. I don't know who William H. Riley Company is. And we're paying VWR International twelve hundred and fifty bucks. And that one doesn't ring a bell with me either, so I thought I'd ask about that.
I remember the Department of Ecology, that's the annual licensing fee for wastewater treatment plant.
Ah, okay.
Okay, I've got a motion for approval. Is there a second?
Second.
I've got a motion and a second for approval of the consent agenda. Any other questions, comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving us to new business, Agenda Bill five dash thirteen, holding a public hearing regarding medical marijuana collective gardens moratorium extension. Mitch?
Thank you, Your Honor, counselors. The agenda bill before you tonight, I'll go over briefly what we're going to discuss. I'm going to go over federal and state law, talk about the existing ordinance that we currently have in place, touch on the proposed ordinance that's before you this evening, make a recommended action, and then go into the public hearing. A lot of this is repetitive from the last couple of plans that we've done this, but for the record, marijuana is classified as a Schedule I drug within the Controlled Substance Act, which means possession, the growing, the distributing, and knowingly facilitating the above, even for medical use, is a violation of federal law regardless of individual state statutes permitting such uses. Under state law, in nineteen ninety-eight, the Washington State voters approved Initiative six ninety-two, which decriminalized the possession and limited use of medical marijuana for patients who were under physician's care and who suffered from a terminal or debilitating illness. In two thousand and seven, those laws were expanded, allow patients to receive assistance from designated providers, and to broaden the definition of diseases and conditions that medical marijuana could be prescribed for. In two thousand and eleven, the state legislature passed Senate Bill fifty seventy-three. This is mostly due to a concern of lack of safe and sufficient medical marijuana for patients. However, the majority of the bill was vetoed by then-Governor Gregoire, but it did put into place a structure to license, regulate, the use, distribution, and processing of medical marijuana. And it established this idea of collective garden, and which hence is the reason for the moratorium that we're discussing. Subsequently, last year, voters approved Initiative five oh two. Initiative five oh two will license and regulate marijuana production, distribution, and possession for persons over twenty-one, and remove state law criminal and civil penalties for activities that it authorizes. What we're also hearing from the Liquor Control Board is that laws relating to medical marijuana will most likely need to change in order to successfully implement Initiative five oh The existing ordinances that we've previously adopted was Ordinance seventeen oh six, which was adopted July eighteenth, two thousand and eleven, which put in place a six-month moratorium. Ordinance seventeen ten extended that moratorium for a year until September sixth, two thousand and twelve. We had Ordinance seventeen twenty-six, which extended the moratorium for six months, and that moratorium will expire on March fourth, two thousand and thirteenth, hence why we're here this evening. The proposed ordinance would extend the adopted moratorium an additional six months. It recognizes the contradiction between federal and state law. It also recognizes the recent adoption of Initiative five oh two. And at the point of note, the ordinance that was delivered to your drop box today, earlier today, we modified the Section nine under that. It's not an emergency ordinance. We still have time before the March fourth date, and so the ordinance itself will... That ordinance will expire, and this ordinance will become effective immediately on September... On March fourth, and it'll go for that entire six-month term to September fourth, two thousand and thirteen. So the recommended action is to hold a public hearing, to take public testimony. If counsel desires, make a motion to read the ordinance by title only, and pass, post, and publish the ordinance in the usual manner.
Thank you, Mitch. With that, I will open the public hearing and ask any member of the public that would like to speak on the item of medical marijuana collective gardens to please step forward to the microphone. Second call for anyone that would like to speak to the item. And third and final call for anyone that would like to speak to Agenda Bill five dash That'll close the public hearing. Counsel?
Mr. Mayor, I ask unanimous consent to read the motion... To read the ordinance by title only.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. An ordinance continuing an emergency moratorium for six months within the city of Waschugle on the establishment, location, operation, licensing, maintenance, or continuation of medical marijuana collective gardens or dispensaries asserted to be authorized or actually authorized under E. two SSB five oh seven three, Chapter one eighty-one, laws of two thousand and eleven, Chapter sixty-nine point fifty-one A, Revised Code of Washington, or any other laws of the state of Washington.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we pass, post, and publish the ordinance in the usual manner.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to pass, post, and publish the ordinance in the usual manner. Counsel, discussion. Brent?
I haven't been here for a lot of the implementation of the moratorium on medical marijuana. I wondered if you could... I know that when you pass a moratorium, you normally have to... It's only for six months, and if you want to go for a full year, you have to talk about studies. What kind of studies have we done for that one year this has been in effect?
Basically, all we've done is we've monitored what the state has been doing, what other municipalities have been doing, and we... I actually drew up a work plan for us to look at how we would, in monitoring that, how we would bring that back to council, how we would bring that forward to Planning Commission if we decided to... If I was authorized by council to move forward with an ordinance adoption.
Okay. And then we extended it again in September of this year, and I was around at that time of that extension. What was the basis for the extension, if you can refresh my recollection?
At that time, we were under the... We were looking at Initiative five oh two passing, or it was up at the state, and so we didn't know what the outcome of that was going to be. And so we, at that time, sought to table it until we... It either passed or failed, and then we moved from there.
Now, we're extending it again based upon I. five oh two, because it actually did pass. Anything else, and other things in the specify in the ordinance that's been drafted? And I think five oh two is a good basis for doing it, and I don't... In fact, I don't think I could actually support this as legal if we didn't have five oh two as a basis for doing it, because we've had a year. I think at some point, it has to be... We have to acknowledge the fact that marijuana of some kind is going to be allowed in the city, because what's your understanding of the ability of a city to zone out a lawful use?
That we can't do that.
Right, and that's why we need to do a moratorium. Yeah, okay. So what I expect is going to happen tonight, and this is where I think the course of this is going to go, is we're going to pass this tonight, extending it for six months, and then, six months from now, we will probably have to do another moratorium, because the Liquor Control Board has until December first, as I understand it, two thousand and thirteen, to come up with their regulations.
Right. There's, in fact, in the first part of August, they're charged with the first two, the production and the retail portions of the law, that they are supposed to have the rules and regulations in place. So we may have a little bit better idea and understanding at that time of what their... The discussions are. I'm not sure if you were able to listen to the information that I provided via email, but they... The state Attorney General's office is really looking at the... At the U.S. Attorney General and asking for some sort of declaration, in his words, you know, that you're going to take a hands-off approach. And what we're hearing from Liquor Control Board is really that that facilitation, the United States Attorney General's office is really looking at, how are you going to implement this in a way that it doesn't cause problems with the legal marijuana here going across the river? So how are the regulations going to be put in place such that you don't have that diversion, is the term that they use for it? So I think that there's, and they've said it already, that there's some ongoing conversations between the state Attorney General and the federal Attorney General, United States Attorney General's office. I think that is really where we're going to get at least a better understanding of what the laws will be and how that will affect us as a community, us as a council, us as a community development director writing code for something that would allow this to occur.
Yeah, I'll point out that we've all heard of Amsterdam. The legality of marijuana in Amsterdam is just simply a letter from the state prosecutor saying he's not going to prosecute it. And that's, as far as federal law here, that's probably what we're going to get here. And that could change at any time.
Mm-hmm.
So the way I expect this is going to go is that we will basically have a moratorium for another year. We'll have to have an extension in six months. And then in that period of time, from December first to roughly March first of two thousand and fourteen, we're going to be working on getting an actual regulatory, at least land use regulatory marijuana ordinance. And by the way, five oh two contains some land... Locational criteria itself, doesn't it?
Absolutely. Yes, some very stringent locational criteria.
And to me, it looked like there would not be a lot of locations that it would be allowed in in Waschugle.
Not a lot.
Any?
Yes.
Okay. And just out of curiosity for... Just out of, you know, way of curiosity for my council members, I looked up to see how five oh two did in the city of Waschugle in the election. Three thousand one hundred and fourteen for, three thousand one hundred and forty-two against. It was defeated by twenty-eight votes, so our community is not of a clear-cut mind on this issue.
Paul?
I would just observe that, for me, the number-one issue at the point of time of the one-year moratorium is encapsulated in the phrase criminal felicitation, felicitation, that, under federal law, you could certainly take the point of view that a building inspector or, in fact, a planning official who signed off on a permit that allowed marijuana grow operation was potentially culpable under federal law for a felony criminal felicitation.
Sure.
And so that, I'm not at all willing to put my city staff in that bind.
Other counsel comments? Can I, Joe?
Between now or during the six-months moratorium, is there any work that you, as staff, have to put forward?
The only work that I would do would be to continue to monitor the situation and what is occurring, really, between state Attorney General and the U.S. Attorney General.
Okay. I just noticed on page nineteen, well, which is Exhibit A, are these... Page three of Exhibit A, paragraph three, it says that you would have to develop appropriate regulations, or, wait. Time is needed to conduct appropriate research. So I wasn't sure if... You've already done that, and now you're just watching, monitoring pretty much.
Really, what I did was update the work plan that I have in place previously, which spells out, continue to monitor what is occurring. Should we get direction, then I move forward, bringing that to council, what that direction is, taking it through Planning Commission, developing land use regulations, bringing that back to council for adoption. But really, without that directive or, you know, letter, if you will, I'm not expending a lot of energy on it. I'm just really monitoring the situation.
Well, that was my concern, that you would be, and then we still don't have direction, so.
No, every six months, I got to spend a little time dealing with it right now, but...
Yeah.
Well, certainly in the next few months, you'll certainly still have benefit of other community development directors around the state and different discussions of where people are going and different things that are coming out, so.
We continue to monitor. At least Liquor Control Board is... Colorado's a little bit ahead of us, so they're really watching what happens there at the federal level, to see what... How that could affect us as well.
Okay, thank you. I think I have one more question. Oh, you already answered that one. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments from counsel?
There's one thing I forgot to ask you about. The Liquor Control Board advised you that her medical marijuana regulations would likely need to change because of what they come out with.
Well, the term "advise," I think I mentioned that at the work session. I wouldn't want to quote them directly, but the...
They said it's a possibility that that's true, that might happen.
The successful implementation of Initiative five oh two would require the changes to the medical marijuana laws.
Local regulations?
Yes.
Okay.
Can I, Joe?
Some more clarification, if you would. Page six. It says, "The city of Waschugle may choose to not amend its development code to allow the sitting or operation of medical marijuana, collective gardens, or dispensaries."
I think that was...
By May.
Yeah, I think that was, at the time when we were looking at the one-year extension, there was questions from the council about whether or not we would even want to have that notion, that we would even entertain that idea. So we revised briefly to say that we may not. You, as a council, may choose not to. There are councils within the state that have chose not to do anything related to it, and to, you know, basically ban them from the city.
So we have the right to ban them, even if the state says we're allowed to have them?
As our city attorney may advise us otherwise, but... And I would probably say we wouldn't want to do that.
Well, when you say "right," I mean, we have the right to do anything, but would it be lawful?
Yes. That's the question.
Well...
We can't... There's certain undesirable uses. This comes up with adult uses and such things like that, that, you know, we don't want any of these uses in our town, but they're legal under state law, and we just can't ban them every place. We can locate them in certain places, restrict them, but we can't... Like in adult... City of Renton is one case on adult uses. Cities cannot ban them, but they can regulate the secondary effects of it. And so you can keep them a certain distance away from schools, or parks, or libraries. And this is similar to that kind of use, in my opinion.
So then, we don't have the freedom to...
Yeah, I wanted to clarify that.
There... Yeah. Well, there are... I believe it's Pasco that did that as well. City of Kent did it, but they're being sued right now, so.
You certainly have the ability to say no and be successful with that, up to the point that a court may overturn that.
May? So, sounds like you can watch them? So you'll keep us up to date on that one, too?
Absolutely.
And how those few cities come out? If they come out between this six-month period?
Paul?
I just observed that, since you mentioned adult, so-called adult businesses, correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding is that they are limited in Waschugle to heavy industrial zoning.
That is correct.
And, sorry, you get into issues where you... While you don't expressly ban it, you've made it so... You might have, like, one parcel in the whole city, and that parcel's owned by a church or something like that, and you've effectively banned it, and that happens, and in case city ordinance has been overturned, where it's just too restrictive. So it's not a... It's a complicated issue.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, I've got a motion and a second to pass, post, and publish the ordinance in the usual manner. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, moving to Agenda Bill six dash thirteen, resolution to amend council rules of procedure Sections two point one, council meetings, two point four, workshops, and add Section two point seven, town hall meetings. Mr. Scott?
Thank you, Mayor, and counsel. Before you is a resolution that will amend your rules, consistent with your direction over the last couple of work sessions, such that your regular meeting times would change from the first and third Mondays to the second and fourth Mondays of a month, and from six p.m. until seven p.m., except for November and December, when you would meet first, second, and third Mondays at seven, and when the third November meeting falls on the Monday of Thanksgiving week, which will happen from time to time, you would hold that... Not hold that meeting and hold it over until the fourth Monday. Similarly, your workshops would be adjusted. They would no longer start at six. They would continue to be, however, on second and fourth, to coincide with your new time for regular meetings, starting at five, and with the exception, again, of November and December, when you would meet first, second, and third Mondays at five. And similarly, to your regular meetings, if that third November workshop falls on the Monday of Thanksgiving week, then you would defer and meet the following week. Those are changes to existing language, and then there's the addition of a new section here in your rules about town hall meetings. There would be four, three of which are general in nature, and they would occur on a Saturday that you would determine, at a location and a time that you would determine, sometime in March, and sometime in June, and sometime in September. And then the, call it the budget town hall, if you would, that you wanted to have as well, and that would be on a Saturday in October or November, as determined by the council. It would be... Whichever would be the ideal time, based upon where the budget deliberations are, and you would determine that. There is notice provision, the ability for the council to cancel, and the notation, as was your request, that council attendance be voluntary for the town hall meetings. So I believe that I covered all of the direction and input that I received from the council at your last work session, and so the recommended action is to read the resolution by title only, and then to pass and post the resolution in the usual manner.
Mr. Mayor, I ask unanimous consent that we read the resolution by title only.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. A resolution amending the city council's rules of procedure.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we pass and post the resolution in the usual manner.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to pass and post the resolution in the usual manner. Counsel, discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we divide the question, namely, that Section two point seven, town hall meetings, be divided from the rest and voted on first and separately.
Second. I've got a motion and a second to divide the question, separate town hall meetings, and to address that question first. Any counsel discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. Excuse me.
Discussion, yeah.
You made the motion. Would you care to explain it to us before we vote? A motion to divide the question... I understand what a motion to divide the question is, but... All it... Did you make it? All it does is to create a separate opportunity to vote on the town hall meetings. Yes, I understand, but I was looking for the rationale. I... Seconded your motion to hear what that rationale is. I'm a little uncomfortable, because motions to divide are not debatable. They're amendable, but not debatable.
There's no discussion allowed? It's not a debate.
I can give you the quote in Robert's Rules, if you want to see it. But after it's divided...
I don't know either.
After it's divided, we will have a discussion.
If it's divided.
Yes, yes. Each motion then becomes separate, and you vote on them as separate... And debate them as separate motions. That's all. All right. Mr. Mayor, would you...
Okay, so I've got a motion and a second to divide the motions. Any additional counsel discussion on that item?
Is your ruling that it isn't debatable?
I have no idea.
That rings a bell.
I still have a feeling, as I always do.
I don't remember, and because it's not debatable, I'm just going to assume it's not debatable, and I'm just going to vote against it.
Don't worry. Any other questions or comments on the motion? Okay, so the motion is to divide the issues between the rest of the agenda and your town hall meetings in regard... hall meetings in regard, well, that's the issue, is whether to divide them. I've got a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No.
Motion does not pass.
Roll call.
Councilmember Booker?
No.
Councilmember Plensky?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenlee?
Aye.
Councilmember McDaniel?
No.
Councilmember Shoemaker?
Aye.
Councilmember Freeman?
No.
Three to three tie. Mayor would vote no. Motion does not carry. We do still have the primary motion on the floor, which is to pass and post the resolution in the usual manner. Council discussion?
Yeah, question? I noticed you only mentioned Thanksgiving week being an exception. We would move it to the fourth. You didn't mention Christmas, and every once in a while, it does happen, that Christmas would be in the third week. I just checked the calendar in 2015. The third week of, the third Monday is the week of Christmas. Just wondering.
I didn't look at all into that issue. I just went with council direction around Thanksgiving.
Can we include that verbiage? Do you think we should, because...
Well, I would suggest that moving it to the, if Christmas week includes the third Monday, then the fourth Monday will be between Christmas and New Year's, which is a bad time to have a meeting.
Yeah.
I would agree.
The rules already provide that the mayor can cancel a meeting with, I forget the notice, I believe it's 72 hours. The council can overrule a cancellation. It would be my expectation that every year, serious consideration will probably be given to canceling the third meeting that's regularly scheduled. It's just here as a placeholder in case budget conversations require later meetings, and instead of not having it in your rules and calling a special meeting, the council gave me direction to have it in the rules and then have it be canceled. It's really six of one, half dozen of the other, whichever way you go with that.
Well, seeing that I've only been here one Christmas, and it was really nice to have that time off, I hope for that, but we'll be ready to serve if necessary.
Take that under advisement.
You might get coal under the tree, that's for sure.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, I've got a motion and a second to pass and post the resolution in the usual manner. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Okay, moving to Agenda Bill 7-13, setting a public hearing for a development agreement with Port of Camas-Washuggal for the Steigerwald Commerce Center. Mitch?
Thank you, Your Honor. Typically, this is an item that would be on the consent agenda. However, given your last conversation, I needed to know what exact date we were looking at. So, the Agenda Bill before you is to set a public hearing for a hearing on a development agreement between Port of Camas-Washuggal and the City of Waschuggal for development of the Steigerwald Commerce Center. The recommended action is to make a motion to set a public hearing for March 11th, 2013, at 7:00 p.m. to consider adoption of the development agreement between the Port of Camas-Washuggal and the City of Waschuggal through approval of the, no, that's it. Sorry.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we set a public hearing for March 11th, 2013, at 7:00 p.m. to consider the adoption of the development agreement between the Port of Camas-Washuggal and the City of Waschuggal.
Second. Got a motion and a second to set the public hearing. Any council discussion?
I just have a question. Mitch, is Tim coming down for the hearing? He was my successor at Pacific Legal Foundation.
He may be.
Okay. He's kind of been following my footsteps for 15 years now.
Any other comments, questions? Okay, I've got a motion and a second to set the public hearing for March 11th, 2013, at 6:00 p.m. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
It's 6:00 p.m.
It's 7:00 p.m., Mayor.
Whoops. Sorry.
Old habits.
We need to amend the...
Can you get that corrected in the minutes, Rose? Thank you. Okay, and that takes us to the second opportunity for anyone from the public that would like to address council this evening. Good evening, Don.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Don Whiteener, Post Office, Box 170, Waschuggal. I have a question about, your finance director was kind enough to forward me the PowerPoint presentation on general fund revenue projections, which I've looked at briefly. I have not asked for or been involved, tried to get involved in any of the detail behind the presentation I see in what she forwarded me, but something, one major thing seems to be missing. Maybe I didn't get it, or maybe we get to it later. Where is the list, we have a list here of mandatory expenditures, gotta-dos. Where is the list of discretionary, not legally prohibited cuts to the general fund expenditures? I don't see any list. I don't see any candidates. I don't see any items. Does that come later?
You know, I believe, other than the presentation that we did during retreat on mandatory things that the city must do, discretionary things and other ones, I don't know that we have any other list that we actually have.
Well, then, I would follow that question, I guess, with one other. Will the council be asking staff to present a list of candidate areas where the general fund expenditures can be cut? Because all I see in here is charging the public more, more fees, more, raising more rates, raising more revenue. Where's the other side of the coin? And when could we possibly expect council to set a discussion on that?
That would certainly be at the prerogative of the council. They can do that at any time through myself, not through staff, but as you're aware, council can always ask for any items to be presented to them.
Well, I'm aware of that. I guess then I would request city council, through the mayor, to request staff to develop a comprehensive list of candidate areas in the general fund where cuts could legally be allowed and not mandated. And I would hope that would be done well in advance of upcoming budget discussions. That's a request, and I leave it to the council's discretion. Thank you.
You bet. Sherry, last chance. Not going to do it? Okay.
I'm not going to ask you. Okay, under Mayor's report, I have two items for you. One is a little bit of a, whoops, we got the cart before the horse, in regards to cemetery board appointments. We have two appointments that were coming due, one for Tina Bear, who had asked to be reappointed to the cemetery board. This happened, I believe hers was back in early February. And then, we also had a vacancy on the cemetery board as well, from a resignation from one of the members. Both positions were advertised. We received Tina's expression to continue on to the cemetery board at the time. The call for members to sit on that actually expired without anyone applying for the second position. We extended it, received one from Janet Alder to take that position. So, I would ask if, one, the forbearance of the council, and also your ratification of the appointments of Tina Bear to be reappointed to the cemetery board, and Janet Alder to be appointed to the cemetery board.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we ratify the appointments of, I'm sorry, Gina Bear?
Tina.
Ms. Bear and Ms. Alder to the cemetery board.
Second.
I've got a motion and a second. Any council discussion?
Just, I want to extend my thanks to both of them for their public service.
Have they been on the board for a long time?
Tina has been on the board, not for a long time. I believe she's serving her second year. Tina's a long-term employee that retired a number of years ago from the city. This will be Janet's first time on there. Any other questions? Okay, I've got a motion and a second to confirm the appointments. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Second item is in regard to the budget item that we had put forth earlier in regards to the turf replacement for Fishback Stadium. I'm sure all of you hopefully had a chance to go through the emails that have come through in the last few days, in regards to the potential expenditure from a couple of members of the Parks Board. And my question out to the council is simply, to try and get a sense of where you may be at in regard to that expenditure. The process is that we would still be bringing through a interlocal agreement, should we move forward, for, between the city and the school district, in regards to not only the replacement of the turf, but also something that is a little bit broader in that, that gives us the ability to be flexible and actually work with each other when one or the other of us has some needs, rather than have to go back and completely come up with some legal language to do that. The request at this point was for a $10,000 amount to be donated, basically donated, transferred over to the school district from park impact fees to help with the cost of the replacement of that turf. It's a $400,000 expenditure, of which originally the school district identified 200,000 coming from their budget, and also charged the boosters in the community to come up with the additional 200,000. We did have a meeting, Dave, remind me, a month and a half ago, with representatives from the school district, and Superintendent Tarzan did confirm at that meeting that in fact they had the field tested. There are some problems on the field, and without the replacement, they are not able, they're able to use it for practice with the liability going to the school district. They're not able to use it for competitive games unless that field is addressed and gone from there. So, the, I think some of the arguments from the Parks Board members are pretty simply stated, and there's one, there's a difference between parks and school district properties, and I get that, I understand that. I'm not proposing that we try and have any of the school district properties start looking like, feeling like, and acting like our parks areas, but I believe that with them being the sole owner and maintainer of a synthetic field in our community, the only one, and we certainly do not want to get into that business, if we can avoid it in any way. It's more a symbolic gesture that hopefully will help spur some additional contributions from the rest of the community and the corporate community. So, that's really where I'm coming from. I certainly understand some of the questions of the Parks Board. We did have, I believe now twice, we've had Mrs. Forsberg go back through to the state and through municipal research to make sure that, one, the expenditure is legal and it's appropriate, and both of those questions have been answered both times to our satisfaction anyway. Otherwise, we wouldn't be bringing it forward at all, and it would have been a dead issue. So, with that, I would open it to council comments and/or direction. Let me back up a little bit. There is still a little bit of work that needs to be done. In addition to the interlocal agreement, we are also trying to finish the updated Parks Comprehensive Plan that will also include that in there as an item, which legally allows the impact fees to be used for it. That goes to the Parks Board for their recommendations, and also goes through the Planning Commission for their recommendations, and ultimately to yourselves for your passage changes or denials as well. So, there's still some things that need to happen in there, and each one of those have comment periods from the public as well. Can I just...
With the ILA with the school district and our donation, does that give us freedom to use the field? What is the relationship now? I don't really even know.
Really, isn't a lot with any of the, I don't know that we have any relationship, Dave, with any of the properties that the school district has. We've certainly worked with the school district on, and secured the grant funds to put in the Schmidt ball fields, which were done through grant dollars, city dollars, school district dollars on school district land, and also the Danielson soccer fields. I don't know that the school district has even ever asked us, because quite frankly, other than the Schmidt ball fields, we don't have any others in the community that aren't in some relationship with the schools, but should they have any ball fields that are destroyed underwater, that type of stuff for games, to be able to use our city ones instead of theirs at a given moment? So, other than cooperation back and forth, that has happened out of other agreements, and most of those specifically for those two field areas, I don't know that there is any. We did ask the question of the school district if they would be willing to allow for some community use yet to be determined...
That's what I wondered if we ever had...
For that stadium.
Had need for it, and if so, are we welcome to use it?
We don't know if we have a need for it. I believe the short answer would be that the school district was amenable to having that in the agreement as well, just as some added availability for the community to use it.
Probably be fees for opening, closing, cleaning, if we were to use it, but...
Unknown. I think it would depend on what the ask is. I know some of the soccer clubs and those types that use it now on a regular basis have kind of sort of been checked out by their staff. They don't utilize the restrooms necessarily, because they're just there for a practice period, and they're issued keys to be able to open the fence areas themselves. So, I think it all depends on what our ask is. The Relay for Life is set to move back to Waschuggal High School and to the stadium area for the next few years, and they had mentioned that, quite frankly, it was a better area for them to do that. The school district has already made those arrangements for them to have that stadium to use for that, which covers both communities.
Good. Thank you.
Dave?
Oh, go ahead, Dave. Two questions, if I may. I just became aware of this this week. The first question I have is, do we have or can we get written assurance from the school district that the artificial turf field would be available on a reasonable basis to members of the public?
I believe we can.
Okay. The second was, the second one is, how can we afford this beneficence when we have a structural deficit?
These are specifically directed park impact fees that you can't utilize anywhere else, other than for the purchase, design, building of parks and their amenities, or the capital replacement thereof as well. You can't use them to put officers on the streets. We can't use them to pave any more asphalt within the city. They can only be used for those specific things that get to recreational uses.
And could you enlighten me about what constitutes a capital expenditure in a park other than acquisition?
I don't remember that they can, that anybody has ever come back with an actual dollar amount. I know the, it seemed like the most notable significance was the 10-year life of and replacement of...
And I'm not so much interested in dollar amounts or that sort of thing as I am in the types of things that can be purchased with those funds.
The classic use of park impact fees is to buy land and hold, and then ultimately develop as a park. All of the design and construction around parks and any amenities that would be in the parks, so trails, playgrounds, ball fields...
Astro turf?
Yeah, surfaces for ball fields.
Drinking fountains.
All of those types of things are the exclusive target of park impact fee funds.
And our port board, our park port board, our park board wants to do this.
Park board has not even voted on it yet.
Okay.
What is our park board saying over there with that big smile?
Well, I have only been to one meeting, and I was catching up on their opinion, but I think they are questioning it. But my opinion is, is that, you know, our city is young and has lots of kids, and, you know, like Sean had stated in one of his memos, that, you know, we don't have a recreation program in the city of Washougal, and so I think it's important, and I think I support it.
Another question?
I would like to at least get an official position from the Parks Board before we acted on this.
I'm not asking for you to vote on it tonight. I just want to see if for some reason counsel is not wanting this to even move forward, that we go ahead and take it off the table.
No, let it move forward, but I would like to explore it, but I'm not necessarily supportive of it.
Understood.
In rough outline, can somebody explain to me what the pieces that are the Schmidt ball fields? Who owns the land? What's the maintenance agreement? How was the construction funded?
Boy, I don't know if I can do that justice right now. I have the interlocal agreement somewhere here, and it explains all of that, and if you would like, I could send you a summary.
Actually, that kind of solves the place that I was going is, was that done under an interlocal agreement?
Absolutely. There was an initial interlocal agreement. There have been several amendments there, too. I just can't remember not having been here when that happened. I'd have to read it to be able to answer precisely. Don may recall.
I know that some of the funding of it, there was a three-party deal. It came from some state agency, some recreational...
RCO funding.
RCO funding. So, it's kind of a three-part deal. They funded part of it, we funded part of it. The city, Earthskinn, the school district put in the land. There is a maintenance agreement that says who's responsible for what, the water costs, it's all filled out in the agreement, and it has been, like Dave said, it has been modified a couple of times. It's parties working together to try and give recreational opportunities.
Yeah, that was my recollection, and I was here only for kind of the tail end of that whole process. But my recollection is that, aside from some funding issues that ended up being that, especially the two most recently constructed fields ended up costing a whole lot more than I think we had ever thought, and that eliminated the funding for a fourth field, if I remember correctly. I may be wrong about that. But my recollection is that we were quite happy with the interlocal agreement with the school district, and that it does provide public access to those fields, which are, in fact, school district land. Then the other question is, how about the soccer fields down here? Is that technically a city park?
I'm not exactly sure what defines a city park. We don't own the ground. We are in a lease arrangement, if you would, with the owner, where we take care of their carrying cost, which is essentially their property tax bill. That's the terms of the agreement that we have with the property owner, and then we have, that's available to the soccer clubs. They do the maintenance. We may help out from time to time. So, we have an array of mechanisms in partnership with various property owners, some private, some institutional, to try to deliver park and recreation facilities to the community. This turf scenario is just one more in that array of the different things. I think, as the mayor mentioned, you have appropriated the $10,000 specifically for this. However, it cannot be expended until the Parks Comprehensive Plan is amended to include it, and we have gotten advice about how to make that happen. Your Parks Board does not have a codified requirement to advise you on that, but it's been our practice to do so, and so we will continue with that practice, and you'll certainly have their advice. They actually kind of advise the Planning Commission and you, because it is required that the Planning Commission give you a formal recommendation on any element of the comp plan, including the Parks Plan. So, there are multiple steps still to go. The interlocal agreement with the school district was recommended to us to ensure that there was legitimacy to the use of these funds. But I think you'll hear as we move forward, and when you see a draft, ultimately if it does end up before you, of an interlocal agreement, that what is public access to the stadium and to this turf field? I think it's clear that whether we owned it, and it was our own facility as a Parks Department and as a city, or whether it's the school's, access is metered out and limited because of the expense that's associated with it. It's just not wide open. It would never be wide open always like our other parks are. You can't do that, not with that type of an asset, and you may or may not charge fees for its use. Most of these facilities in the communities in the Northwest that I'm aware of, many of them are related to school districts, and games and practices occur on those facilities. Some of them are private. Sometimes clubs are able to generate revenue through grants or just through families, and they're able to deliver those, and there are examples of those in different parts of the state. But I don't want to mislead in any way. The interlocal agreement in draft form right now talks about sports clubs, including but not limited to, sports clubs and the Walk for Life, and the Relay for Life, I believe is what it's called, and other opportunities. But the school district would be metering that out, and that threshold, as I just explained, is an adequate threshold for the legitimacy of the expenditure. But I don't want us to be thinking that, you know, every third Saturday is Open Community Day at the stadium. I don't believe that that would be the case. Now, it could be if the school district wanted to do that, and even if it was ours, we might or might not do that. You just have to be, you know, you need to be careful with these facilities.
And along those lines, I would hope that the interlocal agreement would be, as it spoke to that, would not be overly specific, that it would be brief, aspirational, and broad. I think, I personally think this is, I support this, presuming, of course, that we get reasonably favorable recommendations from the Parks Board and the Planning Commission, but I have no problem with this.
I support it as well. I'm the liaison, as everyone knows, to the school board, and I've been listening to many, many years of presentations about the decline of our fields. And yes, we do use our football field and surrounding track area for many other events, including the stride, which is a huge fundraiser for the Washougal Schools Foundation, and many other organizations that go out and utilize the field. So, it's a great community asset. It'll give it a nice, long life once it's replaced, and I assume that it will probably not be, like you said, every third Saturday open to the public and anyone come on over and enjoy it. But as you mentioned, it really shouldn't be because it's such an expensive asset. But I do support the city thinking about pursuing this, and I hope that the Parks Board can come on board with this, because I do see it as an asset, and it's a very, very good gesture between the city and the school district to maintain that relationship and to have a bit of buy-in, you know, to what our generation and future generations will be playing on as far as AstroTurf, so I support it.
Thank you. Can I, Joe?
A couple of things. I know when Doc Harris Stadium was rebuilt, they closed it down lock and key, and the community came to them and said, the school district, and said, no, basically, we funded that, and we really believe that we should be at least allowed to exercise on it. And it went back and forth for quite a bit, and eventually they determined that they would leave it open to the public until noon Monday through Friday. And so, it's open for jogging, very strict rules, you know, certain kinds of shoes, no animals, no motorcycles, or, you know, certain very strict rules, like I said.
Nothing on the field itself.
Sorry?
And nothing on the field itself, just on the track around it.
Yeah, they didn't really say that we couldn't play on the grass part of it, but, well, you know, I don't know that us bus drivers, because that was, we were one of the groups...
Walkers.
Yeah, we were walkers and runners, and so, no, we didn't want to go play football or soccer. But, so that's one angle that I think we need to be willing to consider, that the public will be the one that, through our school board taxes, through our city funding collected through taxes. I think that probably will come up, and I would hope it would be a consideration. I, too, think it's a great idea, but I certainly can see the Parks position that, I remember you bringing to us at our workshop, the cute little playground equipment, but we didn't have enough money for it. I know that they're going to have a lot of warring on deciding to let this go when they already have projects. So, I don't know, Mayor, if they want to come and make a presentation to us, or if you guys plan to just work that out at your own meeting. I don't know how that ought to go, but I'd sure like to hear what it is they're grappling with. Maybe you can come and present that to us. I don't really know. But, so it's one of these, yeah, weigh it out. I think it's a wonderful idea. I think it should be available to the public with really good stringent rules and enforcement. I've seen it succeed over at CAMUS. We, the girl that cleans that stadium is actually also a bus driver, and so we see it up close and personal. When she has problems, she shares it with us. But it's working. I assume it's working well because we haven't been shut out, so...
Any other items from counsel? I appreciate the feedback. We'll make sure that, as communications go back and forth, that we make sure and include you in on them, and that you've got those for the benefit of future discussions as well. That's all that I've got under Mayor's report. Any items from council members?
I just want to report that I attended with the mayor, our mayor, and also Lloyd Halverson and Mayor Ron Anzler from Ridgefield. We had dinner with two of our legislators, and they were very receptive to what some of our concerns. They're going to try to help us with some of our funding for our water and sewer projects, and Administrator Scott was there, too. I forgot. He didn't say much. No, he did. He did. He actually said more than I did. And also attended the AWC conference and pointed out a number of bills that are a concern to the cities involving annexation, mandatory Lake Hurmer agreements was another topic that came up, public disclosure, modifying the definition of tourism that might impact our ability to use tourism, lodging tax money, a number of other things were discussed. We're having some challenges in the legislature. The Public Works Trust Fund is an issue as well. Did I forget anything significant, Mayor?
I tried to forget most of it. I don't remember that there was much good news in any of that.
No.
But there wasn't a lot of new bad news either.
That's true.
Just old bad news.
It's just old bad news.
Dave?
I believe Mr. Greenlee is right. It's motions to divide are not debatable. They are explainable, and that's what I was after.
Any other items from counsel? Can I, Joe?
C-Trans meeting, we did vote on Bus 41. There has been a change made, goes into effect, I don't know the exact date, but it's in May. So, that was, seemed to be a good thing. Got a call from Mayor Higgins asking that I attend, on behalf of C-Trans, attend maybe quarterly, I think he asked, over to CAMUS, and that the RTC representative would come to us quarterly for representation reports there.
Good. Paul?
I went to the RTC meeting. I'm the Washougal alternate to RTC at this point. Melissa Smith is the delegate from CAMUS. I pretty much expect to go to all of the meetings. Frankly, most of it was pretty boring, but the only thing that came up that was potentially interesting is that there is some new federal funding for, I forget exactly what they call it, but it's, they are auxiliary projects to highways, but they're not highways. So, for example, it's for trails or for maybe visitor center work at Steigerwald. Both RTC and the State Transportation Department have to come up with policies and procedures, which they have not yet done, but I just wanted to, I'll get the material and pass it along to Mitch and to Public Works so that we can get an early start on this. I also did mention to Melissa Smith that I thought that, from what I understood, a perfect candidate for some of this funding would be an extension of the trail from Goot Park across SR 14 over to the marina at the port. Then, once the port finishes its trail, or its walkway along the waterfront at the Hamilton property, and we get the trail access on the Schmidt property, that would then connect, complete, make a complete trail system connection from the Heritage Trail at Lackamas Lake all the way out to the fence at the end of the dike. It won't take much money, and it's federal money, and the matches are quite small. It was stunning. So, there's some opportunities there, and I will pass along all that material to staff so that we can get started on it. I'm just back from a week in southeastern California, Indio, actually, Coachella Valley.
I'm sorry.
Yeah. For, for all of you Bugs Bunny fans, Bugs was always on his way to the Carrot Festival at Coachella and making wrong turns in all kinds of odd places, but in any case, it was beautiful down there. We spent, it was, the first four days we were there, it didn't get to 66 degrees. It was quite cool, but there was not a cloud in the sky. And so, we hiked out at Joshua Tree National Park and Coachella County Park and Indian Canyon on the Agua Caliente Indian Reservation, and also took the tram up to the top, where there was a foot of snow up at the top of the mountain. It was beautiful, but I far prefer the water that comes out of our tap. And along with that, let me just mention that Joyce Lindsey sent me an email. She is in Kauai. And so, her quote is, "I'm sorry that I am not with you this evening, but I am on the island of Kauai, trying my best to cope with 75-degree weather, sunshine, and rapidly tanning skin. I do admit that I have never gone on vacation before and wondered about a city's wastewater treatment system or the quality of their drinking water. Now that I know about the high quality of Washouga water, here I am only drinking pina coladas or Washington wine." Joyce.
Thank you, Paul. Dave?
Mr. Bear, in your discussions with the school district, I wonder if you might explore with them, have they looked at the possibility of using Title IX funds?
It's a good question.
Because I think that may, that sort of thing, based on my experience in the past, may be available for...
may be available for this type of project.
I never realized Title Line actually had funds.
I don't know that it does anymore.
It did early on. I don't know if they're still there.
Conversion, yeah. Well, they certainly use it for the girls' soccer fields as well as the boys. So, thank you. Any other items from council?
Mayor, let Councilor McDaniel go first.
Okay. I'd like to recognize a Wauhugul resident who recently won or is going to win an Iris Award at Clark College, Women of Achievement Award. The ceremony's coming up on March 7th, and her name is Diana Crutchmire. She is the Health Services Liaison for Fort Vancouver Convalescence Center. And she's a Wauhugul resident. And she works very hard at fighting for our elder seniors who are being abused. And she has several groups that she started. And she's working on, with other organizations to try and start a group called Haven and build a facility for abuse victims that will accept pets. There are different organizations where people can go shelters and such that people can go to, but they don't accept pets. So this is a big, big project for her, and she's working on that in Clark County. And I wanted to, she's also a friend, so I wanted to mention her name and congratulate...
She's also a great karaoke singer, too.
Yes, she is.
And where do we go to hear that?
The Moose Lodge.
The Moose Lodge, oh, okay.
Saturday nights. But anyway, Diana is a dear friend, and she's a wonderful person, hard worker. She's probably one of the most amazing people I have ever met. And I'm very, very proud of her for winning this award. And I will look forward to attending on March 7th at Clark College's Geyser Student Center at 6:00 PM for the award ceremony. Thank you.
Mayor, the one thing I forgot, and this is in response to some of the things Mr. Widener was saying, I did bring up the Budget Committee. I think that might be the forum to hear some options for, you know, what we can't, what would a budget of the city of Wauhugul look like if all we had were mandatory expenditures? And then, then I guess we start adding things back in based on our priorities. I mean, that's one approach. And I think that's, that's the kind of thing I had in mind for a Budget Committee to look at. When might we expect some kind of progress report on forming something like that?
I've given some thought to it.
Yeah, I know.
I didn't catch what you said, Mayor.
I said, "I've given some thought to it."
Okay.
To expound on that, my thought is to, most likely, if we move forward with that, to take it through the Finance Committee itself.
Just combine the Finance Committee and Budget Committee?
Pardon?
Just combine the Finance Committee and Budget Committee?
Or make the budget process part of the Finance Committee's duties in there as well.
Had some discussion with some council members one-on-one on that. And I think there was some consensus that it should be separate. But, I mean, I have no strong views on that at this point.
I actually think it should be separate as well. I mean, I, we might have a member from the Finance Committee also on the Budget Committee, you know, but I think that we should, as a council, appoint members to a separate Budget Committee. So it will be pretty intense, I think, especially in the third quarter. So, third, fourth quarter, obviously. But, I'd like us to get involved earlier. I just would really like us to do that. And I don't, I know you're very protective of your departments and their budgets, and don't want to push them to get things too early.
Oh, we, I think maybe there's some miscommunication with council. Our budgets come back, our departments come back with their budgets very early, their budget requests. What we don't have is information on what our revenue will even be to begin to meet those requests, which is nothing that a Budget Committee or a Finance Committee or anybody in this building can begin to solve. I would also, I firmly believe that probably 95%, if not more, of the city's entire budget, the entire $31 million or $36 million with projects, is pretty much a standard. It's the same. We add in cost of living, whatever happened to be in union agreements that are there. We adjust things for specific projects here and there. But I would bet that out of that entire amount, there is a few hundred thousand dollars that's discretionary, maybe this, maybe that. Other than that, unless we wholesale change the way that we do business in the city, your budget is what your budget is. That's how lean this city is. So, I mean, even if we look at massively overhauling how we do streets, we only spend $150,000 in improvements or repair of the streets in a given year. It's just, it's not a lot of money. It's not a lot of anything. We could start next month on the budget. I'm not sure what you would do, because, quite frankly, it's, it's not quite paint by numbers, but it's pretty darn close. Dave?
I understand how lean we run. I've seen that. But I think Mr. Boger's got a good point. And that is, you start with the essential services, and you don't need to look at the revenues to do that. And you figure out what that's going to cost you. And then, once you get that document, you've got what we have to do. Everything else is extra. And then, as the revenue projections come in, then you can add to that the things that you, that are discretionary, but important. And if you have revenues beyond that, you can add the things that you'd like to do. But he's got a very good point. You start with what we have to do. And I don't, I don't think we've developed a budget on that basis ever.
I would, I would disagree and say that that's probably exactly, pretty much how we do our budgets today.
I was under the impression that you took the request from the departments and sorted through them and looked at the revenue and said, "Okay, we can afford this part of that."
We've, we have not, to my recollection, I don't believe we've ever asked the departments for a wish list. We've asked them what it would take to operate and maintain their departments in the next year.
Yes, I'm familiar with that question. I've also padded that in order to get through the first and second round of cuts.
And I get that. I believe, though, even if you go back to your budget notebooks, you'll see that there are very few of those that have much of any change from year to year. And I would almost, I would almost bet that there are as many that are lower from the year prior as anything over the year prior.
I've seen some of that, and I applaud the managers that have done that. That's a hard thing to do.
It's just a reality of how we do things today.
I'll be interested to see how the budget develops this year. But I think Mr. Boger's got a good idea, and I'd like to, like to see how that applies to what we do. And look for other areas in which we might apply the same philosophy, same techniques.
Well, there's a, just to follow up directly on his question, Paul, I'm sorry. There's a complexity to it, though. We can decide we need 20 officers, but what would it be like to go to 19? You know, there's a kind of, it's not, it's not a, it's not like we can decide, we're not going to have any police officers, but we can decide whether we're going to have 19 or 20. And what do we have, 19 now?
Currently, we have 19.
Right.
It used to be at 20.
We'd like to go to 20 again. And so there's questions like that. There's, you know, in the city I work for, staff comes up with decision packages for the council to consider as very broad questions. And, you know, that's, that's one way of presenting it to us.
Yeah. And I don't see the council making those fine, fine decisions. I think that's the administration's function. I think the administration does it well. The staff works very hard at that.
Thank you.
But I see the council getting involved in the broad overview of the budget. That's it.
May I stand corrected? Today, we have 18 officers. We'll hopefully have a hire here in the next couple of weeks to get us back to 19.
Right.
But still not to the 20.
To, to add on to what Brent said, the term mandatory is a problem. We don't have to have a police force. We are not required by state law to have a police force. On the other hand, I don't think there's anybody who thinks that that's not a requirement for the city. But it is not mandatory. And I agree with you that the question of, if what you say is, "Well, public safety is number one, police and fire," does that mean they get an unlimited budget and everything else sucks hind tit? I don't think so. I think you have to make intelligent decisions about, is it 18? Is it 20? Is it 10? And as, you know, as funding, especially, I mean, we look at this especially with fire and EMS. With the loss of the EMS levy, EMS now becomes pretty much a black hole in our budget. So what are we going to do about that? Is that really our number one priority? So that we spend absolutely everything that EMS wants before we consider street repair? Or a heating plant, a new heating plant for City Hall? To do a reasonable job of setting priorities takes a level of detail that I think is not appropriate for council. Council's job is pretty much 30,000-foot level. And then swoop down and look at something, and then get right back up there very quickly. That said, I would suggest that if we're going to do a Budget Committee, it really needs to be a committee of the whole. Everyone on council. I don't think it makes sense, if, as much interest as there appears to be in this, I don't think it's, it's appropriate or fair to eliminate any one of us from the Budget Committee. And that means, of course, since it's a committee of the whole, it is a majority, and it is a public meeting. And it may actually turn out that these town hall meetings may end up being the appropriate venue for that discussion. My concern there comes from my academic background. I work in a field in which it's an absolute axiom of success, that the productive output of a committee is inversely proportional to the number of its members. And so I, I think three of us, and there are three of us, I think, that have the interest, you know, that passion for it, would make a good committee. More than that, you get into too many discussions.
Any other items from council?
Yep.
Good night, Joe.
Was it last week that you brought up the Chamber of Commerce scholarships?
Yes.
I mentioned it to our youth group, and I have a girl that would like to know how to go about doing, submitting an application. Do you have the contact information readily available? Can you send it to me?
Yes, I can get that to you, no problem.
Right. Thank you. I think it's exciting that already students come forward, just from a simple announcement Sunday afternoon.
That's wonderful. That's great.
It's good. She's a Running Start student. Do you have any idea if that's applicable for Running Start?
No, I am not moving to their particular criteria.
I don't know how much is covered anyways.
But I will definitely investigate that and let you know.
Okay.
I just received an email from AWC saying that they're going to be handing out scholarships as well.
Okay, you could...
To a local student leader that we recommend.
Nice.
So, if anyone knows of a local student leader that would qualify, here it is, looking for future leaders. Nominating a student from your community for an AWC Center for Quality Community Scholarship. Nominations are due March 15th, and it's an outstanding young leader in Washington cities and towns. And there are six $1,000 scholarships, and they'll be awarded in May.
Do you have a, I'm sure that I have that email, too. What date did that come in?
Today.
Oh, thank you.
I would suggest that the high school student who, students who put in so much time on the Strategic Planning Committee would be ideal candidates.
I love that idea. I really do. We need to discuss that, hopefully with the mayor, and see if that's something that we would like to do as a city.
Any other items from council? I would entertain a motion for adjournment. So move.
Second.
Got a motion and a second for adjournment. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.